Good evening, everyone. My name is David McFadden, Mayor of Tuxedo Park. It is December 21st at 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's rise for the pledge. ... under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please. Present.
Deputy Mayor Shaw.
Present.
Trustee Brooke.
Present.
Trustee Asker.
Present.
And trustee Shara.
On the way. All right. Thank you. So in terms of saying a couple of things before the meeting starts, I wanted to thank the DPW and Jim Wicks of Wicks Tree Service for installing the holiday lights. We've gotten quite a few compliments on that. I'm really, really pleased. I'd also like to wish all the village employees, professional consultants, a very merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy new year. And on behalf of the village board, I want to thank all of our residents and everyone else, the same best wishes for a great holiday season. Finally, I wanted to thank the trustees for their service and for a meaningful and rewarding year. Thank you. Okay, so we're off to open the public hearing on draft local law number seven of 2022, revising the lake laws related to dock size. We do not have anything in writing for that at this point in time. So I'm going to request that we close the hearing and move on to the rest of the agenda. But first, let's open the public hearing. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so any comments before I close the public hearing? Questions?
No, I mean, don't you have to extend it?
You're going to continue it.
Yeah, I'm going to continue.
Yeah, I'm going to continue it.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so as it says in the agenda, we're off to continue the public hearing on February 15th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, and close the public hearing for draft local law number seven, 2022, revising lake laws related to dock size due to the lack of a draft and public notice. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Does that mean we do not have a January meeting?
We do, but it's going to come quickly.
Okay.
And I think it's probably better that we, you know, this law, yeah, okay.
From my perspective, at the January meeting, we should have the draft law.
That would be great. That would be great, because we need to hand that out. Didn't you also mention, Brian, that it has to go before the county zoning board?
If I have to refer it there, I mean, you guys, you could always have a discussion about it in January, assuming, I don't know where everybody is on the proposed change.
We actually, I'm still collecting information from trustees, and we haven't even gone after the public yet for...
Yeah, so we can refer it before the public hearing to the county for GML review, so that's not an issue.
Okay.
Is that a protracted process?
No, it's a 30-day, they have 30 days to review. So we could send it in January, then by the time the other public hearing, we will have their response or we won't, but you could still look forward to that.
Okay, also.
Say something, um...
Sure.
You mentioned the public notice. This was a continuation, so we didn't need public notice, do we?
Well, we would have needed a public notice or draft, which we didn't have.
Okay. So I don't have to put anything in the papers?
No, because we're stating the continuation at the date and time tonight, so you're good for the continuation without publishing.
Thank you both.
That's what I'm saying, thank you.
All right, let's see. I'd like to go to item number seven, for a discussion on the status of pending local laws. I've listed what I think we have on the table, and I just wanted to request to the trustees that I need to gather information from you on your views of these different things. I also want to have something in writing to send out to the public, and once we have all of that organized, we can schedule a public hearings. So again, these are going to be put off until sometime in the early spring, is my recommendation. Any questions or comments?
None for me.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in. We'll have information on the lake laws, on the tree code, and the construction dollar limitations. I personally don't think we'll be ready with anything with respect to filming.
Yeah.
I actually spent some time working on filming, and just to refresh people's... There was all sorts of talk last time about not permitting the club, all that stuff. And I just thought I'd run through some of the questions that arose in discussions I've had. Because there was a general sense that they didn't want to have anybody monetizing the park. That was the theme that came out. And just for purposes of thinking about it as we go to next time, right, one of the questions is, Tuxedo Park, the background or the focus of the photo or film? Right? Take a picture of somebody in front of the park that may not, you know, so the question is, is it, is the IP of the park mentioned? Is it geo-tag? Those are all questions, because people can feel free to take pictures. Is it relevant whether it's a personal phone or a camera? Okay. On influencers, because there was great concern about influencers monetizing the park.
I think you're referring to the laws that the club made, because we haven't passed any laws.
Yeah, no, no, the clause, we had a draft thing, but one of the things just to think about is, you know, influencers, they're all over the place now. Are they monetizing themselves or the park? And I think there's a difference of those two, just to think about it. Where there are restrictions that are appropriate are the issues covered by existing regulations, noise, light, parking, nuisance, all that stuff. And the question came up is, there was a segment in Billions, right?
Correct.
That had a court tennis event. And in that court tennis event, the park was not mentioned. Everyone thought it was great that they wanted to be in the thing. I don't know if we were paid for, I don't know anything about what happened there, but that was clearly not negative.
Briefly, it was on club private property on the interior. It was run by the board. We had no objection to it. Excuse me, it was run by, I guess, John, you and I talked about it.
I remember discussing it.
Yeah, but it was really in the purview of the club.
Yeah, I don't...
And it wasn't, it wasn't viewed to be anything negative to neighboring properties.
So it didn't violate any of our laws? Will we have on the books now?
So the issue is, there may be things that people do that are appropriate for us to consider and things that are not, because everyone films everything now. So when we think about those laws, those are things to think about.
Yes, agreed.
And the other piece is our responsibility is to protect the integrity of the village and ensure its values and stuff work. And a certain amount of visibility is helpful for that, given depressed real estate values. So those are all things to be thought of. Not that we're talking about, I just thought I'd frame those issues because
Very helpful.
I was in LA talking to people, and, you know, I don't think a hearing for anybody filming anything and a thing that we have to pass, if somebody's filming something in their home, that was the case in that suburb of LA. I don't think we need that, so I'm just trying to keep it rational. So that's it.
Good, I appreciate it. Thank you for putting in the time. Okay, let's move on to reports. John, did you want to go first, since you put yours in there first?
Um, yes, I'll give a brief synopsis. We had four requests for certificate of occupancies from the end of November to now. We have some violations that we're trying to resolve with the Wellahand property at 72 Lookout Road, and at the Genesis Real Estate Partners property. We've had a number of inspections done. The Paze project on Tower Hill Road East is going fairly well. The Ripken project on West Lake Road is going well. The Klein project at 130 Continental, they're finishing up interior flooring and carpentry, have projects going very well. Ramos at 73 Clubhouse Road, interior renovations are proceeding fairly well. That application is also before the bar for exterior changes to the property. The Monthera property, two small repairs that need to be made there. And the Lynch and Pomerans project at 217 West Lake Road is going very well. They both had extensive interior and exterior changes that were approved by the bar and myself. A lot of other little things going on. We received another rental payment for the property. We're renting down at the DPW shop for December, another $1,400. We collected the Tuxedo Park school pilot payment in the amount of $6,071. We've had some communications committee meetings about a month ago. Unfortunately, we did not receive a very favorable response from Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile. They really don't think that there's a major issue here, and they haven't really been that responsive. So what we're trying to do is locate an area where a cell tower may be possible, and maybe be able to sell that to the companies that we have a location that we'd like them to consider. The location is at the end of Potucket Road, near the water tank up on the mountain there. We do have some minor issues with the Weewa Dam that were reported to us by Weston and Sampson. We've contacted Michael Quinn of Chernobyl Engineering. You may recall that company that's responsible for overseeing renovations to the Weewa Dam approximately four years ago. So I reached out to Michael Quinn and asked him to come up with solutions to these problems that we're having. VRI has been operating the water and sewer plants without any major issues. We did have one issue with one of the filters approximately a week ago, and we did meet with the VRI representatives, Jeff Boss and John Bello, to discuss what happened regarding the backwash and filtering process. We do feel it's necessary to contact the company that builds these filters and to have them come in to see if they could figure out what happened during the backwash process that created an issue. We did have a meeting with the Climate Smart Communities, Jim Hayes, Jeff Boss, Chief Conquinn, and myself to discuss future progress made on saving energy, both with new vehicles and also just internal operations. I have a meeting scheduled next Wednesday with ONR to discuss some tree removals, and one resident on Ridge Road who has an issue with a utility pole and a guy wire that's located behind her property. And and I worked with Jeff Boss today. I reached out to the oil tank company, oil tank supplier, to see if they could top off our tanks before Friday because of the impending cold and windy weather, just in case we lose power. Everything will be topped, most of the tanks will be topped up by Friday. That's about it.
Sure, thank you. Any questions by the board?
Just one quick question, John, on the proposed cell tower. Do we know if it would reach the racetrack?
Um, the consultant that the board hired is reviewing the plans for for a cell tower in that location to see if they would serve the village appropriately. We're not sure if that location would give a good signal throughout the village, and that's why our consultant's looking at that.
Okay, thank you.
You'll see in the report, there's a there's a mast that they look at. I don't know if it's RF or if it's... One second. They talked about, is it a propagation map, I think, that helps them determine if the cell signal from that location would give a wide array of people service.
I think, you know, to hit every area, especially that would suck love.
It's just the fact, I mean, everybody experiences, you drop a call on the way out, driving out the park, but that would be nice to solve that problem, but...
Well, once again, he's looking at, he's looking at the data to see how much of the village would be covered by putting a cell tower up on that mountain.
Okay, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Chief?
Okay, for the month of November, the police department had 259 calls for service. We made three vehicle and traffic-related arrests. There was two incidents of property damage. We issued 20 traffic tickets and 15 warnings. We responded to seven fire calls or alarms, seven intrusion calls, which were all false alarms, one medical call. We patrolled 2,550 miles for the month, and approximately 760 vehicles come into the park on a daily basis, average. And just one thing I want to say with the impending storm coming tomorrow night into Friday, just be advised, we're getting very strong winds, heavy rains, it's going to freeze on Friday, and we just urge people to drive carefully.
Okay, good. Um, we'll be talking about the snow tires in the consent agenda. Do you want to just comment on that?
Yeah, so one of our vehicle, you know, I, obviously, I budgeted for snow tires every year, but one of our vehicles, the oldest one in our fleet, had some repairs that were needed, and it exceeded our budget, those repairs. So, you know, we ordered the snow tires, but we just didn't have the money in that line item of the budget to pay for the tires.
All right, so for the trustees, I decided to approve the $2,000 investment in snow tires. If there's objections, we can discuss that tonight. Now, it's not in the budget, so what I said we would do was find out somewhere in the general budget as to appropriate it. So you guys can, if you want, raise it again during the consent agenda, but that's what the history is there. Thank you, chief. Jeff?
Okay, as you mentioned, we did the Christmas lights at the main gate and then at the south gate. We've been picking up leaves up until the past week or so. We cleaned the small triangles throughout the village of leaves, and also Weewa Park. We did a bunch of work down at the police station. We insulated the attic in the police station, repaired some broken glass in the windows, replaced missing hardware on some of the doors down there. We repaired one of the garage doors here at Village Hall. received salt deliveries and transferred into our salt shed, clean drainage catch basin, service plow equipment, plowed and salted roads. On December 11th, 12th, and December 15th and 16th, we repaired a leaking water service line in the village, continued meter installs, did various mark utility workouts for Dick Sager, installed a shut-off valve on the service line in the village, and fourth quarter meter readings, had a new pH sensor and a new clear well level transducer installed at the water plant, removed the sludge pump down at the sewer plant that became clogged with leaves, and checked the Turtle Point Road pump station regularly.
Thank you very much. Okay, and do any of the trustees have any comments about the minutes? Okay, I'd like to open the public comment period, please. Would anyone in the room, would you like to raise their hand? Okay, anyone online? Please. Sheila's got her hand up.
I'm cheering and joining hands and also...
You want to invite Sheila to talk?
Oh, before we, before we open the floor, let me just mention, I'm aware that there was an email that was sent around to everybody before the meeting talking about coming on to the meeting and standing a position on the tree law and the dock size law, and John making decisions about projects of a certain monetary amount without sending them to the bar. And just to save everybody some energy, there's really no point in taking any comments now. We don't have anything in terms of a deliberable or other format to share at this point. The only thing we have done is send the bar the, an outline of the tree and law, as well as the laws related to, John led with approving projects of a certain, under a certain financial amount, rather than sending them to the bar, and we got our reply back from the bar, which we're happy to publish if anyone wants, but otherwise, I don't really want to spend too much time on something that we don't have even a draft of. So with that, Sheila?
Yes, and my two minutes are basically on process going forward, so I think they still remain relevant. Good evening. Speaking on behalf of the bar, we do request that the bar's position statement in response to trustee Brooks' proposed tree law at 100K threshold for bar approval be posted on the website promptly, along with any other related comments received pro or con. Just today, I learned that trustee Brooks sent a lengthy rebuttal to the bar's position statement to the Board of Trustees over a month ago, without sending it to the boards for their response. Please also post the language of the proposed laws well in advance of any public hearing. Finally, speaking personally, permit me to add that I am philosophically against the changes proposed and question the basis for them. While after the meeting, I will no longer be the bar chair, I'll be the former bar chair, I encourage all residents and the law, especially the large number of new residents representing the bright future of Tuxedo Park, many of whom I have recently come to know, to get involved and discuss, debate, and carefully consider the implications of these new draft laws for the village. I wish everyone a happy holidays.
Thank you. We have no draft laws yet.
I'm aware.
And, and of course, they will be circulated, and of course, they'll be on the website. And of course, to be a public hearing. And I don't know if I want to post your comments on the website. I think I'd rather having a debate and arguments on the website might be a turn off to some potential buyers. Why don't I leave your memo from the bar on the counter here at the village office, and also in a PDF format? So anybody that would like one can request one like we would do with anything else.
Well, I feel like it would get broader distribution and provide a more a better background for the law when it comes out, if it were to be posted on the website. But of course, that is in your discretion, and the bar would recommend that it be posted.
Okay, I would say as an act of courtesy, I responded to her a query on whether we had done anything, and I provided a draft response to that memo to the trustees six or seven weeks ago. As an act of courtesy, I sent her a copy and said, feel free to look at it. And we'll deal with it when we look at the, at the proposed regulations in the next month or two.
I appreciated that courtesy, but I did receive that today only in response to a request as to whether there had been a response to our bar proposal. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, anyone else?
Joanne Hanson, answer.
Joanne?
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to go ahead, and I'm the chair of the planning board. I'm going to read a letter that's been approved by all of the members of the planning board, Jay Reich Scott, Rich Witty, and Bronwyn Rowentree, so that you can think about it as you're drafting this law and have it as a frame of reference. And I want to start my comments by saying that I don't think either the bar or the planning board are what they were many years ago. I think that the work that Mayor McFadden and the trustees have done over the years have made all of these boards substantially more responsive to residents.
Literally.
And so I think that's a really important context to under, to recognize the work that David and you all have done and continue to do to make the boards more responsive. That said, the planning board opposes the recommendation to increase the amount of money that would then go to the building inspector and not to the boards. And so I'm going to read a letter that's been reviewed by all of the members of the planning board.
If I may, we're only referring to the bar, not the planning board.
I, I'm aware of that, but I think that, that the two boards work hand in hand, and we certainly have a perspective on it. And I'd like to share that perspective, because you're getting ready over the next months to draft something. So the bar, this is the formal response, and I'll send it to the village. The bar has prepared and submitted a thoughtful response opposing these suggested changes. If you are, sorry, I'm starting in the wrong place. The bar, the planning board supports the recent bar comments opposing setting a dollar threshold for items that go before the bar. Applicants before both bar boards are often educated and guided to best practices, which are ultimately beneficial to the applicants. In addition, the process allows neighbors to be aware of and comment on proposed changes. As the village is currently experiencing, it's difficult, it's expensive to enforce code requirements when residents proceed without renovation, without submitting proper plans and conforming to building codes. From a planning board perspective, the presence and maintenance of trees on properties is a key component in maintaining proper drainage of the property itself and the neighboring properties. Trees also provide privacy and screening between neighbors. As the trustees are very much aware, the lake is the village's drinking water source, and minimizing runoff into the lake is an important environmental consideration. Both boards are sensitive to making the process work smoothly for the applicants, as the boards are volunteer knowledgeable neighbors, working with and on behalf of neighbors. So that's the formal comment from the planning board that I'll submit. I hope that you'll take that into consideration. I will also add, on a less fearful front, that I can come to you and speak in executive session. We focus on the property rights of the applicant, obviously, but we also focus on legitimate concerns of neighbors, which are impacting their property rights. And I can certainly give you recent instances where if those processes are not worked through in advance in public, the potential for litigation exists, and I'd be happy to address that with you all in executive session.
Sure, thank you very much, Joanne, and thank you for the compliments, and I want to thank you for all the great work you've done. When we first split the planning board and the bar, you were, I assigned you to that position. You've been there ever since. Thank you. I've done a terrific job. I think, just to clear up, and I'll move on. There seems to be a misunderstanding, and this is one of the problems with sharing information until you have a draft. For example, Paul's suggestions are more of an internal thing that we were collecting comments on. And, for example, the tree law, which is, the trees are everyone's concern. One of the ideas that was brought up was that if you own 100 acres of land or 80 acres of land in the village, you're allowed to cut four trees a year. If you own a half acre, you're allowed to cut four trees a year. So the thought was, maybe it's more fair and equitable if a person with larger properties can cut more than four. It's just an idea. We haven't confirmed it. We haven't put it into law. It was just an idea thrown out there. It certainly meets the common sense standard. We haven't addressed in any way, shape, or form trees on the lake or lake properties. And if that would, if there was anything there, it's very, what we proposed was very preliminary, and I just want to make sure everyone understands that, that. And in terms of, you know, John approving things that are under a certain monetary value, that's still being debated too. We don't know whether it's going to be monetary value or project type, or none of the above. For example, if there is a driveway that is before the, it comes to John, and the design guidelines are clear that these are the types of colors of stones we'd like, then maybe it doesn't have to go before the bar. Maybe we can save the client a lot of time in the process. Maybe John can approve that. It's common in other municipalities. In no way, shape, or form would we ever give up notifying neighbors. I don't know where that, Joanne, I don't know how you got that idea. But that's never been discussed here. So anyway, that said, Paul, I don't know if you want to comment?
I don't think there's anything to comment. I mean, we're talking, talking about values here. We're talking about adjustment and dock length to link with allowable boat size. That's not very controversial. We're not changing the tree law. It has, it has a certain limit. We're just adjusting for the size of the property. So if your building lot is three times what's allowed, you're allowed three times more trees. And so what we're trying to do is user-friendly, and we appreciate everyone's comment, and it'll be a trustee decision once we formalize a proposed law.
Okay, anyone else?
And I, if I could just add, I fully appreciate that, and the reason that I went ahead with the planning board's comments is because you're framing your thinking. A lot of, there's quite a bit of change to a property that can occur for $100,000. I never said that the village would not notify neighbors, but what is the process for the neighbors? I never said that the village would not notify neighbors, but what is the process for the neighbors then expressing their concerns? And very often legitimate concerns. And I think both the bar and the planning board work together to come up with appropriate resolutions. And I think, as I pointed out, there are some examples that did that process not happen, people could end up in litigation.
Agreed. Okay, anyone else? Chu Yan? Microphone. Someone's pouring wine. That's really a good idea. See that person, Bill?
Yeah.
Save some, Bill.
I trust you can hear me now. I know, Mayor, you said that you are still collecting information and you were discussing it with the trustees and, and posting draft law for public comments. I just want to, at this point, provide you with some background information, which I think is highly relevant to your consideration. My first point here is that historical architecture situated in the heavily wooded landscape is what distinguishes Tuxedo Park. These qualities earn our villagers' listing on the National Register of Historic Places. And they also underpin our real estate value. We elect our trustees to be stewards of these important assets, namely, architecture and landscape for now and for future generations. I have served on the BAR, including as chair in the nineties for six years. I've learned from my experience that the, what seems to be the smallest and the cheapest modifications, like changing the color of a historic house or the color of the pebbles on the driveway, to other than historically appropriate colors can significantly damage the overall aesthetics besides causing big irritation to neighbors. So I hope you will consider this point when you think about changes to the BAR's jurisdiction. Among many other cons and maybe some pros. As for the proposal to sanction more tree removal than what is already taking place legally as well as illegally, please bear in mind that the early residents of Tuxedo Park actually spent hundreds and thousands of dollars between eighteen eighty-six and the early nineteen thirties to plant trees and shrubs on their properties. And their landscape plan can be found in places like the New York Historical Society. The rustic aesthetics that we enjoy today were actually created at vast expense. Why? Because the land, Laura Law's inherited, had actually been commercially locked. And that's why some people say, oh, we didn't used to have many trees. No, we didn't. The place was locked. And the original residents rebuilt the tree canopy. So why are we considering laws, we should think about, that would destroy this priceless inheritance? Even, even if we were to for a minute to forget the damage that excessive tree cutting would do to the environment and to our drinking water reservoir? My personal belief, and I hope you would consider this point, maintaining what is beautiful, important, and peerless is never easy or simple. Nor should it ever be about making the maintenance rules and procedures easy or simple or user friendly at the expense of integrity. So thank you very much for considering this background information.
You're welcome. Again, I apologize for whatever rumors are out there. No one on the board has any intention of deforesting the park. It's very simple. We have a trustee who brought to the table the idea of giving people with larger acreage the ability to cut more than four trees a year. It's under discussion. It's a courtesy to the trustees who bring up ideas to share them. But I mean, to even think that this board would do anything like that is just, fortunately for all of us, not even on the table, never was, never will be, as far as I'm concerned.
I'm very glad to hear that, Mayor. Incidentally, as you know, I did several books on Tuxedo Park and all of them had photographs. The first book, Historic Houses, was published in two thousand six, seven, six, and the photographs were taken in two thousand five. My last book on Tuxedo Park on The Gift of Nature, the photographs were taken in two thousand fifteen. I can show you photographs of the exact places in the village where trees have been denuded legally and or illegally. We may not intend to have deforestation, but deforestation is happening naturally because as Christopher Gao has mentioned in prior meetings, the Emerald Ash Bora and, and the Woody Aldiget are doing our job for us. But human beings have also been doing a lot of the work.
I can tell you that whenever I've been mayor, no one was clear cutting. I can think of three or four examples where acres were cut. I wasn't the mayor and it'll never happen under my watch. So moving on.
I'm, I'm glad to, to hear that. Clear cutting, I think is a very strong word.
Well, you, you've got solar farm, you've got a solar farm, you had one of the mansions on the hill, clear cut trees down. None of that happened under my watch. None of it.
I'd just like to make one point to have you keep it in mind when, when you're deliberating this law. And that is, as far as the trees are concerned, Chu Yan is right. Many trees are being cut regardless of what you say. They are. And I think that it is important, if you're going to have any change in the laws, to think about how you're going to enforce the laws. Because enforcing the law is not easy. It's not easy to take members of the community to court and they can pay the fine. The fine will be small. So that doesn't work. There are things that will work and I've mentioned them before. And I think you should seriously consider it to make it the responsibility of the tree cutters. And if they cut down more than four trees, they don't work in the park. That will stop it. That will stop it immediately.
So Jim, it's a great idea. I've been bringing this up to the village attorney over the past several months about why can't we hold the contractors accountable? For not allowing, you know, working on a job without a permit. Cutting down trees without a permit. I know that many of the existing tree companies ask for proof. They'll come to the village office and ask for proof. But the news I've gotten back from the village attorney, and maybe you want to comment on that, you know, who can we hold the contractor responsible for working on a project without a permit?
Yeah, I think when I addressed that, it was sort of a mixed bag. You were discussing architects and design people and no, I do not think you can hold them accountable because they're not usually onsite performing work. I think anybody, any onsite contractor, you could regulate, you know, to say that you cannot work here unless there is a permit in place in the village and you'll be responsible for knowing that, et cetera. But it has to be, I think, contractors that are actually working at the site, not design people or people who do drawing.
Well, that's fantastic news because this is something I've been advocating for, for months. And it's a great way to avoid litigation. Fortunately, unfortunately, we have a lot of contractors here that will work knowingly when there should be a permit. And I'm glad, you, Jim, I'm glad you brought it up and that we're following up on that because that's something I'd like to discuss. How does the rest of the board feel about that?
Well, I think if we're allowed to, if, if a resident is allowed to cut four trees a year, right, do they have to go before a board to get permission to cut the allowable cut? To the best of my knowledge, they don't need to. If they do it inappropriately, we have remedies. But, but if you are cutting down trees within the allowable limit, there is no formal process where you have to approach saying, I'd like to cut down these four trees. Right? That doesn't exist.
If I may, I, I think that's something we should address. I think that anybody that's removing trees should have a permit. I thi- I can't think of another just more disruptive maintenance issue that happens in the village than three or four trucks coming with wood shippers and cutting down a tree. I've been blocked in my house a couple of times when my neighbors have done that, which affects two things. Me being able to leave and particularly if I'm responding to a file, fire call. And if one of those tree cutters gets injured, an ambulance being able to get to them. And I think having a formal process in place where the building inspector can go through where, how, this is a very narrow road. How do you plan on get there? How are you going to do it safely? Is an appropriate oversight mechanism, excuse me, for the village. And then it would help enforce the number of trees that are being cut because they are going to be watched and possibly inspected by the D W, who has a citing authority as well and the building inspector.
It was obvious there's issues that the board will discuss. It'll be a robust process and we'll have laws month or two.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Comment period's closed. All right, so on consent agenda, do any of the trustees have any comments? Or questions?
Item H.
Item H. Okay, what's your question?
So, and what, what have we approved initially?
Okay, so a thousand? Yeah. And so that was for one file. There's five files, which would be five thousand dollars. And Elizabeth negotiated with them for twenty-five hundred total. So, correct? Yeah, so that's why we're at fifteen hundred increase.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you just remind me of item D?
Yes.
The extension of the P S E and G proposal?
Okay, so I sent it to you today because I was unsure if it conflicted with what you're doing with the aggregation program.
But this is a no decision decision, right? We're basically extending. Is that right?
I, I'm not involved with it. This is Elizabeth's thing.
So would you like to participate in this program? We'll send you a rebate check after a year.
Right.
And, you know, the rates would probably be lower.
Right, I don't know whether it's
We are getting the rebate check, just for your information, it's one thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Since then, I've sort of learned that I should never, ever do things like that. And anytime someone asks me anything, I always say, I have to talk to the board. This was a mistake, you know, it was a mistake.
Right.
But we did get this. And since then, I, I did contact Jeff Domansky.
Okay, good, perfect.
I told him, I gave him all the information and I said, feel free to change it or not. I'm not giving him to anything. At this point, we've done the year, we're getting the rebate. So we're free to stay or go or
And so what are we doing at, what are we agreeing to here? That's what I'm asking.
So I think that
We're just continuing to extend, but this is based, it's a fixed rate, but this is based. You, you, you heard back from Jeff Domansky and he said, go ahead?
I said to him, you can do whatever you like with it. You can, you can continue this or you can sever the agreement with
At any point in time.
Any point in time because we did put in the year, we're getting the rebate check.
And did he give you any, was, was there any other color or comment that he provided other than
He liked the agreement.
He did?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's all I needed.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? I'll just speak to the Fresh Direct. I approved Fresh Direct to come, to extend their hours from five to nine. And that's what's currently in place. I sent a email to the trustees that I would make a move with that objection. There were no objections. So I vindicated that to the chief and he's put that in policy. Okay, so resolved to approve the consent agenda, items A through H. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, so we're going to be holding a joint meeting with the town. Public hearing on annexing certain village properties from the town into the village. And they're on Brook Road. And we have a tentative date of the twenty-third. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, there just correction. I think one is on Brook Road, the other one, they're far apart, these two parcels.
So one's on Brooklyn.
One's on the opposite side, closer to Route Seventeen, up in that neck of the woods on that border of the town.
Okay, thank you. So I included on the website, the resolution that Brian wrote for us. Any questions about that? Resolved to confirm joint special meeting with the town and village boards to hear the public comment on the annexation of certain town property into the village on January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three at seven. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so
Just for info, that would be at the, let people know, that'll be at the town hall.
At the town hall. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
We will do notice, but I'll, I'll give you that. We're both the town and the village will both notice it.
Thank you.
Okay, so I was going to name some bar appointments. But before the meeting, one of the trustees requested some time because they haven't talked to these new candidates. So I'll table that until January. Um, let's see. I've resolved to exit the regular meeting and enter an executive session at seven forty-five to discuss water account, legal matters and employee matters. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to go into executive session. Thank you, John, if you can do the appropriate. Thank you, Jim. All right, so
We should just wait. And are we still recording?
No, I know I'm still putting people in the waiting room. Got a lot of people to move.
Yeah, it was pretty well attended tonight.
There was a letter that went out, an email that went out. No, I sent by.